I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Dr. McGee, roll call for attendance, please.
Chairman Borger.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yep.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Here.
Mrs. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Leclerc.
Is excused.
Excused.
Okay. I believe we have some guests tonight. Mr. Bebo? Or should I call you Uncle Fester? Great job, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Christopher Depot. I'm the band director at One Socket High School. Thank you very much for inviting us to perform this evening. We are going to be performing two pieces that will be performed next Thursday night at our collage concert at the high school. It's at 7:00 PM. Tickets are $5 in advance and $7 at the door. It's our first collage concert since 2019, and we're very excited to put on a performance for you. We're going to start with a piece from our percussion ensemble. It's called "Me Tarzan," written by Chris Crockerell, and it's also going to feature filling in tonight, my student teacher, Ms. Michaela Fernandez, who will be graduating from the University of Rhode Island next weekend. So round of applause for Ms. Fernandez. So here it is. Great job percussion. This next piece is going to be conducted by Ms. Michaela Fernandez. It's titled "Appellation Morning." It's by Robert Sheldon. Thank you very much. Another round of applause for Ms. Michaela Fernandez, our student teacher, and to the selected members of the concert band. So again, our concert is this coming Thursday night, May 19th. Thank you again for having us perform this evening and...
Not this Thursday night.
Not this Thursday, next Thursday, May 19th. Yes, thank you very much.
Recently, the school committee voted regarding putting in a policy regarding good and welfare. So I'm going to read this, and we'll be reading this before every meeting, before good and welfare. Any member of the public wishing to address the school committee is invited to approach the mic at this time. All speakers are reminded to identify yourself by name and address. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes, and that's per person. Please restrict your comments to issues affecting the One Socket Education Department and over which the school committee has authority. The committee and superintendent will not engage in a substantive dialogue with any speaker during good and welfare, and that's to comply with Rhode Island Open Meetings Act and other relevant legal obligations. But you're not being ignored. Your comments should not disclose personal or confidential information and shall not be disruptive, profane, vulgar, discriminatory, defamatory, threatening, nor of any nature as to incite violence. Failure to comply may result in verbal warning, loss of privilege to speak, or removal from the meeting. So if there's anyone who wants to address the school committee, please come to the mic.
My name is Melissa Bubble. I am at 650 Third Avenue, One Socket, Rhode Island. Unfortunately, as of last Friday, there is no more PTO at Coleman School due to communication issues and lack of knowledge being given to the PTO, and the principal over there has decided to more or less take charge of the PTO instead of the PTO being the PTO and then having the parent liaison go between the PTO and the principal like it should be. There's also things that are still not fixed at Coleman. I'm not sure what they're called, but like little grate things around the windows for the basement of Coleman, they're still exposed and rusty. Children can play with them, and I have seen children play with them. Someone is going to eventually get hurt. Now that the good weather is coming, there's also a hole in the schoolyard that eventually, with enough rain and continuous rain throughout the year, will become a bigger hole and eventually sink the parking lot where the teachers park and then also where the kids play. There's also still an issue of bullying at Coleman that I'm hearing. Thankfully, not my children, but I do see it on social media. There's a lot of parents complaining. I do know that we cannot stop all of bullying, but we're all wondering what is being done to assist the bullying, to stop the bullying and help these parents with these kids who are getting severely bullied, and some of them, I hear, are extreme cases. And that is all.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to address the school committee?
Good evening. Alethea Forcerer, 127 Ledgewood Lane. I'm just going to give you a quick background for those of you who don't know who I am. My kids have been in One Socket schools since 2005. I've ran multiple PTOs at elementary and at this middle school, and they were very successful. And it breaks my heart to hear that a PTO is being removed, the parent piece of the PTO is being removed. And I just had this conversation yesterday in a meeting with a few of you that I feel like these parent liaisons are taking over the parent involvement, participation piece that's needed for Title I, and that needs to change. And ironically enough, I've changed since our meeting yesterday what I was going to speak about, and it all includes parent involvement in the schools. Calling on this school committee and Dr. McGee to help, to hold your administrators accountable to bringing parents back into the schools. COVID is over. There's no reason that these parents should not be at in-person parent-teacher conferences, that there shouldn't be meet and greets with the principals to address concerns that parents have. We need to do better. Like, this doesn't feel like a community like it did 10 years ago. Like, it doesn't. It's not the same feeling, and you really need to have that parent piece. I feel like that's missing. Before COVID, there was a huge decline in parent involvement, and since COVID, it's been erased. So we need to figure out as a community how to get that back, because until you do, your schools aren't going to be where they need to be. Sorry, I'm just trying to figure out. So some of the concerns that I have as a parent is, our kids have been out of school for two years, and when we brought them back into schools, I don't feel like enough was done to help teach these kids how to socialize again. These kids don't know how to behave other than what they've been behaving like at home for the last two years, and if they haven't been in a nurturing environment, we all know what that looks like. So I would like to see personally some assemblies that support appropriate behavior for these students and more events like dances and get these kids around where they're supervised a little bit better and have them socialize that way. We need to do more for these kids. We also need to be more supportive of our college-bound students. I have two kids that are in college that both graduated from One Socket High School, and I have one that's a junior in high school, at One Socket High School. We need to address scheduling conflicts where they can't get into their appropriate AP and honors classes because they're being dropped because there's too few students in them, okay? My daughter is a senior. I still don't know what her senior schedule is going to be like, but right now, she has a biotech class that's supposed to be two periods, that she is only allowed to go for one period because she has to go and take her honors algebra class, and that's not okay. Her grades are suffering. Her GPA is down because she's trying to cram in two classes worth of work in one class, and that's not fair to her. And she's still being asked to hold her NHS standards because she's the National Honor And I also want it noted that, I'm just going to remind you, I had two kids already that have gone through high school and have graduated and have gone on to college, and my third child decides to come home and tell me that SATs don't matter, that she doesn't have to take them. I said, "Are you kidding me? Who told you that?" And she said, "That's what they're saying at school." I didn't even ask who they were, but just the fact that she has it in her head as a junior that SATs do not matter is not okay. Whoever told her that doesn't know what her plans are for college unless it's her guidance counselor, and we need to do better, because the college tours that I go on say, yes, SATs are optional, but a lot of colleges use their SAT scores to determine merit money, and unless One Socket Education Department is paying for my kid to go to college, they shouldn't be telling my kid not to go take their SATs to determine how much money they get in merit money. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to address the school committee?
Good evening, everyone. I was on the radio today. My name is Estelle Bubble, 648 Third Avenue in One Socket. Some of you know me for a long time. My daughter was bullied in school, and, you know, I really had the support of the school committee. Now, like I said on the radio, social media, there's a lot of people that are complaining, and I said they should come down here and voice their opinion in front of all of you. That's the only way things like this is going to get resolved. But again, because the kids were home for two years, they need more social activity. So whatever we have to do to get the parents to even be chaperones, you know, we used to have school dances and all this kind of thing, even if the nice weather's coming out, this is what we need to do for the children, that we need to teach them, and if it has, we've got to get more of the parents involved. One other thing is, when I was at Fifth Avenue School, I was helping the PTO or the PTA, and the person that was running that would give the principal, you know, what was coming up, you know, this is what we can do, and all this, and then they also had an account to put the money in and not the money going to Mcfee Building. This has been a problem this year with some of the Fairmount schools, and I think we need to have a meeting with, you know, with them, with the PTOs of all the schools or PTAs with all the schools to have this clarification, saying that this is how it's run and this is how to help. Again, my daughter had a lot of people at the beginning of the year. A lot of parents were involved, but because of miscommunication, now they don't have any, and that's a shame, because you know what? Fairmount really needs that. That being said, if you want, I can come back and do the live videos again if you would like, just let me know. Have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to address the school committee? And before we get into recognitions and announcements, I'd just like to mention that on 5 to 0 vote, the school committee approved the memorandum of agreement regarding summer school salaries. Next, we'll get into recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to recognize Mr. Depot, Ms. Alves, and Ms. Fernandez for their work with our One Socket High School band and chorus students. The performance that we saw tonight was wonderful, and I'm really looking forward to the collage concert on the 19th. So they did a wonderful job here, and it was a little sneak preview, and it looks like it's going to be a wonderful performance at the collage concert. So thank you to all of those wonderful students and their teachers. We have some students from One Socket High School here this evening, which I'm really, really excited. If Mrs. Barbosa, Ms. DiBello, Mr. Guio, if you could, and Mr. Webb, why not? Sure, Mr. Webb's back there, too. If you could accompany our students to the podium, I want the committee to, and I think the committee is aware, Mr. Burke was present with me, as was Mrs. Kepiscus, on May 4th, which was the kickoff at One Socket High School for the Mental Health Awareness Month, which is May. We were thrilled to have these amazing three young ladies from the high school who are going to, some of them, maybe all of them, I don't know, we'll see, might speak briefly here this evening, but I just wanted to kind of explain to the committee what's been happening in the One Socket Education Department, not only this month of May, which is Mental Health Awareness Month, but what's been happening really for the entirety of the school year. First, the celebration was, again, to recognize mental health awareness, and in the school department, we've worked very, very hard to support students coming out of COVID. You know, I explained to the crowd that was there that the last three years, there's been an explosion of mental health issues and problems among our youth across the country, and I'm very proud of the work that we've been doing in the district and at One Socket High School. One Socket High School is the first, the only high school in Rhode Island to have trained our young, wonderful young students in teen mental health. So I want to recognize, there were 50 of them, they're not here this evening, but they were recognized at that kickoff event on the 4th, and we're very, very proud of them. We're proud of them because it's not just up to the teachers and staff and administrators to look out for one another, but it's important for our students to recognize the signs of depression, recognize signs of students, you know, not feeling good about themselves. And that's just another opportunity for us in our district, and specifically at One Socket High School, for our students to go to an adult and say, "Hey, my friend, you know, maybe my friend doesn't feel comfortable going to someone, but I'm letting you know that he or she is hurting and needs someone." So I also want to recognize a few people that are here before we get to the wonderful students. Gigi DiBello, who is our coordinator. And Gigi doesn't like the recognition, but I got to tell you, Gigi's been here for a few years now, and she coordinates the grant that we received, the mental health grant that we received, which is a five-year grant. We have one year remaining. Gigi has done an amazing job of coordinating just a lot of resources and work and supports for our students in our district, both within our school district and the community. I also want to recognize Mr. Guio, principal of the high school, who's worked very closely with Gigi to provide these opportunities to our students. Yes. Mrs. Barbosa, Karen Barbosa, who's assistant principal at the Career Center, who has provided a lot of leadership, so I want to thank her for the work that she's done. And we have Mr. Webb here, who has also played a large role in the supports that we have. And there are a few other people that I want to recognize. I'd be remiss if I didn't. So we've trained, so in an effort to train our students, we had to have adults, teachers at the high school who were trained to be train the trainers. So I want to recognize them. They're not here this evening, but Deb Bacon, Ann Croft, Christine Audette, and Gina Lambert are the three teachers from the high school and the Career Center who have been trained so that they can train our students. So I want to give them a round of applause as well. There are a few events coming up that I want to just let the community know about before I hand it over to the three most important people that are here this evening, and that is, we have on Thursday tomorrow, May 12th, there is a, at 6:00 PM, there's a virtual mental health open house. We had a virtual open house yesterday, and I wasn't able to attend it, but my understanding is that it was very successful, and Gigi can speak to that in greater detail, but there was a lot of support from our community organizations as well as the school department. And on the 14th, this Saturday, there's going to be an in-person, in-person Eric Hamlet Middle School from 11 to 1:00. It's a mental health fun fair. So we're hopeful that, you know, those of you in the community will attend and support our wonderful students and the wonderful work that we've been doing here around social emotional learning. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Gigi, and Gigi will give us a little more information. Thank you.
Is that good? Yeah. Thank you, Dr. McGee. I'm being forced to go first by the students who really pumped themselves up to give really eloquent speeches last Tuesday, but don't have their notes in front of them tonight and are not quite as psyched at this moment. No disrespect to you all, school committee. I first want to acknowledge the comments of the parents who went earlier and just say that you definitely acknowledged what we're all seeing in our schools around behavior and mental health. And so the picture Dr. McGee just painted of the work that we are doing is another truth that lives alongside of the truth that you painted. It is a really hard time right now, and our students are really struggling around socialization and being able to interact with each other and with the adults around them in a way that reflects the things that you've taught them and that we've tried to lay out as expectations in our classrooms and in our communities. So I think what you're saying is also true. There are multiple truths here on the table. To Dr. McGee's point that I've been here for a few years, I just want to say it's been 18 months, and a lot of that was COVID, but in the time that we've had the grant, we've worked really hard to elevate best practices around behavioral mental health. And there is an event tomorrow night. I hope you'll join us, families, for, we had about 30 folks, nearly 30 folks, in the open house yesterday, spotlighting six community organizations and the work they're doing to support mental and behavioral health, some in our school actually partnering with us. And then this Saturday's Mental Health/Behavioral Health Fair will include more agencies as well as events for students and families. So we're not done yet. There's an event on May 21st, which is a training for families in youth mental health first aid, a full-day training. We've had some parents participate in that last year. We're doing it again. We'll send out more information on that, but we're definitely hoping to be partners with the community, which includes students and families. So to that end, we do have three students who spoke last week at a kickoff event, which was featured in Turn to 10, and one of them was involved in a year-long work group for SEL. I'll let them introduce themselves, and that work group has been working with students and families and administrators to kind of unpack the things that we need in our schools to support mental and behavioral health in the way of social emotional learning. So we hear you. That's one student who's been in that work and is about to graduate, and then one student who's been working actually as a member of the commissioner's task force or advisory board, and so she'll introduce herself, and then one student who is here to sort of represent the students who were trained in teen mental health, although the other student was also trained in that. So I'll let them just at least introduce themselves, say a couple of things. If they don't want to do any more, then just introduce themselves, that's fine. Maybe my Asia will do a cheer for us, and she just came back from a cheerleading competition. in Florida. And thank you. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your commitment to the issues of behavioral mental health. Okay, who's going first? Kayleis.
Hello. Hi. I don't really have anything profound to say, but I would just like to say that the teen mental health training, I think, is really important. Like, I'm really glad I had that opportunity to learn what I did in the training. I think teen mental health has always been important, but especially with COVID. COVID hit a lot of people hard, and I think it was really important to be able to see, like, signs if a person is struggling mentally and solutions to, in ways you can help them, especially for our peer mentor program. Those were the first people at Windsocket High School who got trained, because those are the people in our school who help, who, or at least try to help other students adjust to high school and just be there for them. And like Gigi said, I'm on the RIDE Student Advisory Council, and a lot of our conversations have been centered around mental health and integrating this teen mental health training into schools. And I'm really glad that I'm, it's, I'm starting to see it happen, and it's going to happen, and it's a step in the right direction. So thank you.
Hello. My name is Maridi Youth. I'm a senior at Windsocket High School, and I've been in the social emotional work, learning work group for a couple of months now. And I learned a lot about the school and just how we can improve emotional health, and I'm really glad that I got to be a part of it and kind of share my side of what it's like being a student and share, like, just the issues that I see and how they can probably be fixed. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Maser Smith, and I'm a junior at Windsocket High School, and I got certified in teen mental health through my health careers class.
Yeah, no, I know. I just wanted to say that since even the event last week, that we've already had the impact of the program play out. We've had a couple of students already advocate on behalf of other students. One was to deflect a potential fight, and one was around some stress that they were experiencing through social media. And so in both cases, they tried to de-escalate the situation with the student and then connect them with a trusting adult, and we were able to talk through the situation and not have it escalate beyond that. And in both cases, they attributed the work that they had done through peer mentors and teen mental health first aid to feeling confident to do that. So while we're not advocating for our youth to take on a healthcare professional role, the fact that they're looking out for their peers in a, in a more thoughtful way is, is really wonderful to see, and we're excited for this to continue to grow at the school.
I just have to say something to say something. So I just wanted to acknowledge the students and for their leadership and passion for this very needed area at our high school. I also wanted to let the committee know that I'm excited to announce that the high school will be partnering with a program through the University of Michigan next year in order to expand our reach to the middle schools so that we can partner our transition work between eighth and ninth grade with all of our leadership opportunities at the high school. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Dr. McGee? You have any more?
That concludes my remarks. I just wanted to say, too, it was great to see this, this day was on Channel 10 last week, and I believe, because the reporter was there, it'll probably be in tomorrow's Valley Breeze, a story about that day.
Really good. Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you guys, while they're walking out the door now, but I just wanted to say thank you very much for their encouragement and being able to stand up, especially when other students can't find their voice. So it's really nice to have a program like that.
Definitely a great program. We're very thankful that you're involved with this, and our students are as well. Great job. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll have the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the April 27, 2022 closed meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the open meeting minutes for April 27, 2022. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any changes to the minutes? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does anyone on the committee have any comments or want to take any item out of order? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Dr. McGee, I'll turn it over to you for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just getting my papers together here.
Sure.
So I'm going to start with personnel, as I normally do. So the district hired a social worker, full-time social worker at Windsocket High School, also a personal care assistant at Pothier Elementary, who will be working with, with one particular student. And we have a couple of leave of absence, leaves of absence, I should say, as well as one transfer within the district. The second part, I'm going to speak a little bit to the committee and to the community about some of the meetings that we've had most recently with, with a variety of stakeholders, both within the city and outside the city. As, as you know, we've had, unfortunately, a rise in, in violence, both in the schools, especially at the secondary level, and just in the community in general. So we've had some opportunities to reach out to, as I said, the various stakeholders. I've had meetings with some representatives from our faith-based organizations. I've had, on two different occasions, I've met with, with some folks from, from those organizations. We've also had, there have been some, some community meetings with the Milagros Project. They've had one in which they invited some people from the Institute for Nonviolence in Providence. I've also had a meeting with, again, a group of school department personnel, including administrators. Some school committee members were present. We've also had some community members, and we had students from Windsocket High School, as well as some, some community-based organizations to meet with the Institute for Nonviolence. Just to get, to give you a little bit of a, of a background, the Institute for Nonviolence is an organization that promotes nonviolence in Rhode Island. They mainly work in three of the urban core districts or communities, Providence, Central Falls, and Pawtucket. They've been working there for, for quite some time, especially in Providence. And I reached out to their executive director, Mr. Cedric Huntley, to see if there was an opportunity for them to come here, to meet with us, to see if there is any type of a partnership that we could establish with them in terms of training students, staff around conflict resolution, and also promoting nonviolence in our schools and in our community. We had a very good meeting last week, and I'm going to be reaching, I have reached out to them to coordinate another meeting with a smaller group, just myself, and primarily the, the administrators from the middle schools and the high school, to see, again, what, what can we do specifically as we move forward, as we start the plan for next year. I also attended this past Saturday at the Tyra Club here in Windsocket, a roundtable meeting with, with youth from the community, which was a very good and, and eye-opening meeting. We got some really good feedback from the students that were in attendance there. But in attendance were some people from the Nonviolent Schools Rhode Island. So that's another avenue that I've reached out to. In fact, I, I just scheduled a, a time, a date and a time for them to come in, to sit down with a group of us to talk about what they could provide in terms of supports. This particular group, again, they, similar to the Institute for Nonviolence, they go around and they go to schools, and they, again, they promote nonviolence, they promote conflict resolution, they, there, there are trainings for students as well as staff. So while there are things we're doing in our schools to try to promote nonviolence and to try to promote, you know, positive, healthy communities where there are adults that can provide supports to children, we, we need to seek some, some input from outside, I think, of our, from our schools to see if there are other organizations who can assist us as we move forward. Because it is, it's, it's a problem, and, and the, the groups that I've met with, you know, this is not just a school problem. It, it ends up in school. Oftentimes, it starts out in the community and it spills over into our schools. But it's a problem, and, and it's a crisis, and it's not just in Windsocket. I've spoken to colleagues from across the state, and, you know, these types of incidents, there's, there's, there's an uptick in many communities, especially the urban core communities here in Rhode Island. But that's the data that we know, and we have to try to figure out how we can prevent it and how we can educate our students. That's, that's what it comes down to, and also educate our parents, because the teachers can't do it alone. We need the support from the families. We do a lot of, trust me, I, I speak to the principals and I speak to the behavior interventionists often, and the number of mediations that are conducted every day in these schools would, would cause you to, your head to spin. We try to be proactive. Our administrators and staff and support staff try to be as proactive as they possibly can. But I think this is an opportunity, as I said, for us to reach out to see if we can get some support from some of these organizations where they can come into the schools and work with us to try to educate our students and our staff, to provide, you know, opportunities where, where all of our students feel safe coming into our buildings and all of our staff feel safe coming into our buildings. So we've done a lot from the last time I discussed this with the committee, and we're at the part, we're, we're at the, the, at a crossroad here, where now we're going to start getting some of these folks in to see what exactly they can provide in terms of assistance and partnership with us. So, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the committee has at this time.
I was, Dr. McGee, I was very, it was very enlightening to attend the meeting we just had with the Institute of Non, from Nonviolence. And it's clear that we've got a good internal system of reaching out, where we have students, principals, administrators, the police department, the school committee, and folks from the community getting involved and trying to work out and hopefully mitigate any, any incidences of violence. It's also very important, as you just said. It's not only internally that, that we've got to find a solution, we need the community to really get involved. Because other than that, if the community does not get involved, then you have finger pointing, and it's, it's usually negative. It's your fault, their fault, whoever's fault. But if we all take this on as a challenge for our community, that's the only way we're going to get answers, in my opinion. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive the superintendents' report and place it on file. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Next, we'll go into the school committee reports, and I'll ask Mrs. Kepiscus to take us through the curriculum subcommittee update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Windsocket School Committee Curriculum Subcommittee met on May 3, 2022. Meeting was called to order at 3:03. We reviewed the prior meeting's minutes, and they were approved on motion from Paul Borger, seconded by the chair. We then moved on to a discussion of the Summit Learning Platform. We've been using this program for the last eight to 10 years, but Dr. Holt advised that the district will begin phasing this program out as of 2022-2023 school year. The program has been only a limited success and has caused some inconsistency in our buildings with different teachers using different platforms. The program is cumbersome. By comparison, our Google platform works better. Summit is not aligned with our curriculum, and we are striving for consistent curriculum across the high school level and eventually the middle school level as well. While some of our teachers liked it, 71% of our students struggled with the program, particularly the lack of fixed deadlines. It is generally more successful only with students who are self-starters and have good time management skills. These are the students who are successful with Summit and who will up to the high school expressing an interest in continuing Summit. However, once the feeder program for the middle school ends, we anticipate this will change. The current seventh and eighth grade will be the last students to use Summit. We will not, we are not the only district to move away from Summit. Providence has done so as well. Third item on our agenda is a discussion of the adoption of high-quality instruction materials for both ELA and math at the high school level. RIDE now requires that all districts adopt and use green-lit curriculum, that is curriculum that has been approved and reviewed by RIDE. As our ELA curriculum, English Language Arts, is more homegrown, it's necessary for us to adopt and move into a green-lit curriculum. Ms. DC and Mr. Rato explained how the various available curriculum were reviewed and advised that the district adopt Study Sync, published by McGraw-Hill and available for grades six through 12. We already use this curriculum at the middle school level. The program offers both written and digital components that allow the curriculum to be used both offline and online. The subcommittee members were provided with sample textbooks and workbooks to review. Professional development on the new curriculum is scheduled to begin on the next scheduled PD day, which was, I believe, today, and will continue through the summer with paid training. Teaching coaches, teacher-coaches will also be embedded during the next school year. All spoke highly of the publisher as being very supportive of their curricula with in-person support as a plus. When asked, Ms. DC and Mr. Rato assured the subcommittee that the majority of the ELA staff at the high school are on board with the new curriculum. Excuse me. But as RIDE requires change, there really is no choice. We must change. With regard to the math curriculum, Ms. Cozera advised that the math department will come along, but again, we really have no choice. Our form of homegrown curriculum can only be green-lit by RIDE if 75% of our students score proficient on the standardized tests, the RICAS, PSATs, and SATs. And no district in the state can meet this requirement at present, so they're all being required to shift to a green-lit curriculum. As a plus, Study Sync is currently used in our middle schools, and this continuity for our middle school students transitioning to the high school just makes sense. As our funds will be used to purchase the new textbooks for both ELA and math, the materials are both a mix with regard to ELA, a mix of classics, and more up-to-date materials provided in different formats, including graphic novels, but are not a full book in all cases, although a full book is available online for students who are interested. Ms. Cozera presented the members with sample textbooks and workbooks for math as well. As she stated, math is math, and therefore there is no significant difference between this new curriculum, might be of use in this, in the past, but we must move ahead and change the curriculum to comply with RIDE's green-lit curriculum requirement. And I ask the question as a parent, because it's always been an issue with the constant shifting from curriculum to curriculum, and there really is no choice in this matter, although whether or not we want to stay with our homegrown curriculum, we cannot, and we must move to a green-lit curriculum per RIDE's regulations. Because personally, as a parent, it gets very tiresome with the curriculum constantly shifting. The next meeting of the curriculum subcommittee is on September 27, excuse me, 2022, at 3:00 PM, and then Windsocket Middle School at Hamlet in room 124, as usual. We discussed whether or not we should have a meeting in June, and it's simply too difficult to schedule with year-end events, and we always suspend subcommittees for the summer, hence there is no curriculum subcommittee meeting until September. Meeting adjourned at 3:52. That is my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any comments for her? Vice Chair Burke?
I've been on the school committee almost seven years now. Remember, three years appointed, four years elected, and there's always changes with curriculum. And I agree with you wholeheartedly, Mrs. Kepiscus, that we need consistency. And yet, RIDE, I mean, in my seven years, what do we have? We're on the third or fourth graduation requirement right now. We're now in our third or third curriculum now for math or English. I mean, obviously, we, nothing we can do about it. But somehow, there has to be more consistency. Now, I don't want to brag, but I was a Massachusetts teacher, and we have consistency in, in the education program, and Massachusetts has been the number one school in, in the country because they've had the same graduation requirement, they've had some of the same curriculum materials. So I, I don't know what the answer is. So I, I don't know what the answer is. I, I just, I'm just expressing with, with, uh, Mrs. Kepiscus here, my frustration with another change in curriculum.
May I, may I respond, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
I wholeheartedly agree with you, in case you didn't guess. I, I am tired of the constant change. I'm tired of the constant shift. Every time we get a new commissioner, there's no rules, no regulations. If it's not greenlit, it'll be something else. Uh, and what every district needs is consistency. And as Ms. Cozera said, math is math. What does it matter which curriculum we buy? I have some thoughts about why we have to go to greenlit curriculum. I think we can all figure out what the problem is. That there are certain favored institutions that we're being forced to deal with. That's the bottom line. But as a parent, it's extremely frustrating when you shift from curricula to curricula. Your kids get used to something. Oh, we're going to pull the rug off from under you. Let's start something new. And it's very frustrating. Um, but you expect us to be able to help them and sometimes we don't even know what they're talking about because of the constant shifts in curriculum because things just aren't taught the way we were taught any longer. And I'll get off my soapbox.
Mrs. Kepiscus, I agree with you and Vice Chair Burke because I've been on seven years and we see the changes. We've been jumping up and down like a yo-yo, haven't we? Yes. And it's not like they're trying to get it right. They're just constantly making changes that apparently it's very, it, it doesn't make any sense. It's very difficult on parents. And I'll say this, it's also very difficult for our administrators and our teachers. I mean, you finish one year, you think you got it right, you got your lesson plan ready to go and then boom, a brand-new program comes up. You got to learn something new. So I, I agree. This is a very frustrating element that we've got to deal with. But like you said, the programs must be greenlit, approved by RIDE, or else we just cannot use our own homegrown programs, even though they're working. Even though people have gotten used to them. And, you know, both the students, the teachers and the parents, got to start all over again. Any other comments?
Vice Chair Burke. Follow up. How much, um, uh, discussion went on over the past year dealing with this curriculum? Were there groups, were there focus groups, were there, were there hearings throughout the state? Because this is, is the curriculum committee, is this the first time that they've, they've heard this?
Well, we turn over to Dr. Holt.
Has there been some discussion?
Yes, thank you. Um, our ELA and math department have been meeting for the last year, a little bit over a year. We've selected pilot teachers to review. We have what we call vendor fairs and we had multiple vendors come to show us their products. We selected from those vendor fairs two to three, um, curriculum that we piloted, so the teachers actually got to experience. The students got to experience the curriculum in the classrooms, on the platforms. For our math department, we also worked alongside a cohort of other Rhode Island districts, um, RIDE and Ed Reports, which is the greenlit company that, um, Ms. Kepiscus was referring to, um, to go through the vetting process. So it's been an ongoing, year-long process, um, meeting with focus groups, meeting with the pilot teachers, meeting with vendors, professional development in the building for the teachers using those programs. It was an in-depth, um, process. We had, um, all of the directors a part of this, the conversations to make sure that we're addressing our MLL students, our differently, our students with, um, IEPs. Make sure that we're addressing all of the literacy standards, technology pieces too, so that we're looking at how's the data coming in and how we're supporting it. So it was a long, long process.
As Director of Curriculum, how do you feel personally about this change all the time?
So I agree that change can be difficult. It's one of the reasons we were looking for consistency from the middle school to the high school. We went with our Study Sync from six to 12. We're looking at HMH, um, Intermath and AGA, which is Algebra, Geometry and Algebra II, to keep a consistency across the board. When speaking with the ELA department, we've been using homegrown curriculum for the last, I think Danielle said, 25 to 30 years. Um, it's been a while since we've adopted a full curriculum in our high school for ELA. Similar for our math, we do have textbooks, but similar, it's been a long time since we've adopted something new. We've had in our elementaries Eureka for the, I think, at least 10, maybe 12 years now. So that has been consistent along, um, for, for a bit of time. So I agree with you. We want to keep consistency. I also agree that we don't want to move just because something is greenlit. That's why we spent a year looking through the curriculum. All of them, all of the curriculum we brought to the vendor fair are greenlit, but we had to look through and make sure it meant our needs and our teachers' needs, our students, that it was the right fit for us. So, yeah.
I feel, um, that's great.
Well, actually, you feel frustrated. You haven't told us, you told us the process, but how do you feel?
I feel great about the process we went through. I'm not frustrated with that. No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone, Ms. Mrs. Kepiscus?
Just one final comment. I, I don't want Dr. Holt or the teachers involved in the process to misunderstand me. I'm not poo-pooing the process they went through. I'm poo-pooing the fact they had to.
I agree with that.
That, that's, my complaint is with RIDE. My complaint is not with the district. The district worked hard. I, I provided Mr. Burke with the information. He gave us a curriculum because I felt as a teacher he'd be the most able to understand it. Because to me, it might as well be Greek. If it were Latin, I could read it, but not Greek. So I thought it was better to give it to him and have him review it and, and maybe provide us with some insight as committee members, uh, when we next meet. But it was, it wasn't, it was the first time these were formally presented to the Curriculum School Committee, but we have curriculum subcommittee. But we have known for over a year through Curriculum Subcommittee, this was coming because we knew about the greenlit Ed Reports and all that. So we knew changes were coming to have to make the curriculum consistent across, essentially trying to make the curriculum consistent across the state with the thought, I think, behind it, besides the obviously political overtones of it. That you want a consistent curriculum across the states where a student in the 10th grade moves from One Socket to Central Falls, they would conceivably be in the same place in 10th grade in Central Falls in the curriculum as they are in 10th grade in One Socket. I don't think that's going to work out, but I think that's the RIDE's intent.
The devil's in the details. We'll see how it works. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the curriculum subcommittee update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Mrs. Kepiscus to give us the CILAC update.
CILAC's much less controversial and much less exciting. Sorry, Dawn. Me? Yeah, no kidding. That's fine. The One Socket CILAC met on May 5th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We meet virtually. Meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM. We began our meeting, as we have been for the past few months, with a presentation. This one was from Deb Belanger at RIPIN, the Rhode Island Parent Information Network. For those who aren't familiar with RIPIN, RIPIN provides a tremendous amount of support and services to families across the spectrum of ages in Rhode Island. They can help you with early intervention. They can help you with your school-aged children and making sure their needs are met. They can help you with your own healthcare needs and they can help you with elders who are in need of, um, health services or perhaps guidance with regard to the placement in a long-term care process. She detailed those services as well as the, these services particularly aimed at Rhode Island families are offered by RIPIN and its staff. In addition to, um, services in the form of training and support, their services cover the range of ages and multiple issues with a focus on information sharing and self-advocacy training. Those interested in speaking to a RIPIN employee are advised to reach out to their call center, which can direct you to the specific RIPIN department. They can help with your particular issue. The number for the call center is in the minutes for the CILAC. If you want them, I'll send them to you. Give me your email. But it's 401-270-0101. The email for the call center, real easy, callcenter@ripin.org. RIPIN's website address is at www.r-i-p-i-n.org. And there's a dropdown menu for all the various services that they offer. Uh, with regard to the parent support group meetings, um, I was informed between our last meeting and this meeting that the parents are beginning to meet again. The first meeting will be in June. The agenda was sent to all the parents and staff and anybody who's on my email list. Because anybody is welcomed. Those are parent support group meetings. We don't specifically talk about special ed. They're just there to support each other as parents of children with special ed. It always turns to special ed, uh, because that's where we can talk freely about our advice and guidance to others. But I'll remind you, if you intend it, pay your own way. The first one, I think, is June 14th, 6:00 PM at Texas Roadhouse Grill in North Smithfield. Congratulations, you just got a free ad. Proposed changes to the high school graduation requirements. The date for public comment at that point was near, the end was near. It was yesterday, May 10th, 2022. I reminded all to please make their voices heard at RIDE, whether you were for or against. And as a little update, I did hear on the news this morning that although they had a meeting last night, there was a gas leak at RIDE. So they didn't have much of a meeting. They recessed and they're going to reschedule. So I'm assuming no decision was made with regard to graduation requirements. Whether they were planning on doing that last night, I really don't know. But I know many parents who were planning to speak publicly were denied that opportunity because of the gas leak. So hopefully they'll reschedule that and not close the period for public comment. That seems quite unfair. Ms. Morrell then gave us an update on an extended school year program for summer 22 for students with IEPs. She advised that meetings with families and guardians of IEP students who are being referred for ESY by classroom teachers are beginning to take place. If you believe your child needs ESY services to avoid regression over the summer, that is the point of ESY services, please reach out to your child's classroom teacher to discuss. Resource teachers, research students, excuse me, should plan on doing the half-day Monday through Friday summer program being offered to all students in, in all schools in the district. While this program is not technically ESY, it is anticipated that supports can still be offered to these students as needed in these programs. ESY will meet four hours per day, three days a week, as it has for the, in the past, and offers more intensive programming with more supports for those with higher needs. The next agenda item was Special Olympics. Mr. Robideau along with Mr. Plasse have been running unified sports in our district. And our unified basketball team at that point was on its way to the championships on Saturday, the 7th, against Cranston West at Bishop Hendrickson. And I hope I'm not jumping the gun, if I may announce they won. Uh, the special ed director and assistant special ed director are in the process of reaching out to Special Olympics in an effort to bring their programming into our schools for some of our younger students. They hope to provide a liaison to every building to promote inclusivity and maybe help develop more unified sports programs built from the ground up. Ms. Morrell also reported that the famous bowling novens made their happy return in May to the joy of all who participate. Superintendent expressed appreciation for all teachers during, um, all that our teachers do during Teacher Appreciation Week. He reminded all that May is Mental Health Awareness Month and advised that One Socket High School had just certified 50 students as the first mental health first-stayed trained peer mentors in the state at a ceremony at One Socket High School on Wednesday, May 5th. On May 14th, from 11:00 to 1:00, the WED will host a mental health fair here at the Middle School at Hamlet. All are invited to attend. Special ed had nothing to add, special ed director had nothing to add beyond what we'd already discussed. School committee liaison, that's me, remarked about the ceremony with regard to the mental health first-stayed trained peer mentors. And I advised, because it was, that it was very moving, uh, to hear the student speakers speak about their training and what motivated them to participate. Our chair, who's president, suggested that we honor these same students and ask the three presentants to speak at a school committee meeting, which Dr. McGee advised he would try to arrange. The next meeting of the CILAC is on Thursday, June 2nd, 2022 at 6:00 PM. That is the final meeting of this school year. The link is provided in the agenda on the Monday before, that's sent to you out on the Monday before the meeting. And it was also provided in the email in which I sent out the minutes to this meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 7:00 PM. Attendance fluctuated between 15 to 17 participants throughout. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any comments, questions for her?
Um, I just want to say the, the RIPIN, you know, for anybody that's listening or, or missed.
Speak into the mic, please.
For anybody that's missed, that missed the CILAC meeting and the RIPIN, that's a really, really helpful program. I actually have students and I use that program and it's very, very helpful. So don't be shy to get information and reach out to that program because it's very helpful.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the CILAC update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Mr. Notorianni to give us the Technology Facilities update.
Thank you, Chairman. So this evening you have the Consolidated Facilities Technology update. Um, over the last month or so, the technology staff have been working on formulating a plan to collect Chromebooks or student Chromebooks for the summer or at the end of the school year. They've been working on Chromebook repairs. The committee may recall that I reported out that it's been really tough to get parts. But the supply line is starting to loosen up for technology and we've been able to get parts in, so we're making repairs to many of the broken items that are on our work order system. At the elementary level, we finished the updates to the security camera system. Um, which the committee may recall that once we finish with elementary, we're going to circle back and look at the middle school level. ID FOB cards, um, for access into the buildings. Uh, the, we've gone through all of the buildings multiple times. And at this point, we feel that the project has been completed. Anyone that didn't receive one can contact my office and we will send someone out to, to create one. And lastly, the cybersecurity measures item on the agenda here is, um, updates that we're doing to all of our computer systems with new virus protection. Uh, we're going to be rolling out password protection and we're going to have a whole campaign about cybersecurity awareness here in the district. We're going to be meeting with, um, an individual from the Homeland Security Department. They will do an, an assessment, if you will, and provide us feedback and advice as to how we can tighten up the security in our systems. The data staff in the technology department have been working with, um, the superintendent and superintendent secretary, Dr. McGee and, and Ms. Blaze, to, um, tighten up the GED ALP coding, which is, uh, coding that we report to the state. They are busy working on summer program data setup and configuration, anticipation of the summer programs. They are continuing to work on the electronic records for EZIEP. And they're also working on the, um, student registration process for the 2022-2023 school year. The facilities department, um, was still operating with several vacancies. However, that being said, I'm very happy with the progress that they're making. As things are getting reported, uh, such as emergencies, they're dispatching as quickly as possible to, to make repairs. Um, they recently completed heating switch repairs at Coleman Elementary School. They've, uh, assembled emergency evacuation sheds here at both middle schools. So if we have to, hopefully never, but if we have to do an evacuation off-site from the high school, we are supplying those sheds with all the materials necessary to conduct a, an evacuation and dismissal from this location. And we recently met to talk about the high school, um, graduation process. We're happy that it's, you know, going to be back at Berry Field and in full swing. The school resource officers, we continue to meet with them regularly. Um, we discussed the fact that one, one or two of them are going to be going for Alice training this summer. And they're going to explore the possibility of having deer training, um, for the upcoming school year. And they're also continuing to develop the 2022 summer programming with the activities that they, they work with the students throughout the summer. Uh, that concludes my report. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Do we have any questions for him? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Technologies Facilities Update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We don't have any old business and we have new business. Uh, the first item has been withdrawn and so we'll go on to number two. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the employment contracts of non-union employees. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, committee each has a spreadsheet of all of the non-union, uh, employees. And if you look at this list, there, it's, it's really broken up into kind of two categories. First is amendment letter, which means those individuals had an existing contract that was in excess of one year. And there was just a, a, an amendment to their, to the, to the, to the contract that they had, which would reflect the, uh, the, the 3% raise. And then the second half would be the individuals who had one-year contracts. And as I had mentioned to the committee previously, um, that would be anyone that was new to a position. Whether it's within the district, a new position, with new administrative position within the district, or somebody who came to the district from another district. Started with a one-year contract. So these all reflect the, uh, three-year contract for those individuals.
Any questions, comments for Dr. McGee? Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Bourgey.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Next, number three on our new business list has been withdrawn because the teachers that we would have been talking about have obtained jobs. So we'll go on to the last item, a new business, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the 2023 One Socket School Committee Annual Meeting Calendar. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. This, as you, as you can see, it's, it's a listing of all the, all the meeting dates for 2023. And I know every year that we begin, uh, and we, when we come in for our first meeting, we, we, we're not sure what we have for, for meetings. So this way, uh, we'll be. So this way, 2023 will be set. And again, it follows the same pattern as before, the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month, with the exception of July, November and December, where we have one meeting for that month. Any comments or questions? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourgey.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:11 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.